What?
It's warm here, huh?
It is.
Warm from last time, so I dressed up fairly.
Yeah, it gets sunned, huh?
It was warm last time.
Yeah. Hi Greg. Great, how you doing? Huh? Yeah. Me too. Greg, did you hear Dennis more?
Thank you.
Huh? I had a bunch of doubts.
So, I had a bad piece of COVID and I lost hearing.
What? What? What?
That's what we do tonight when you speak up. We do this all the time.
Oh, right.
Oh, that was the pump is what I get.
Oh, that wasn't, that wasn't what we ordered.
Oh, I thought it was.
No, that was not tea.
Oh, I missed it. So where does?
That were usually thunder in the state, so they have.
They're moving it now.
Okay. Okay. Well, it should have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, how are you? How are you doing? How's it going, thanks? So.
Hey Karen.
Hey, did you hear my doubts?
No, about your ear?
Yeah. I'm hearing pretty good. It's very strange. I can hear some people, not others.
That may be a good thing.
Oh, yeah. I know, I'm back to teaching.
Oh, really?
And one of the features for me is a good thing. We'll see. Are people not coming today?
I don't know.
Because I see we don't have. He was going away, wasn't he?
Howard, was he?
I don't know.
I can't keep up with everything.
I know.
Oh, thank you.
It's a little heavy on you, huh?
No, actually very light weight.
There are you.
You think it would be, right?
Okay, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So do you get some more in again?
Yeah, I guess one more again.
Yeah. Oh, there it is. So this is what I missed when you said, good, that one looks there.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody, turn up your microphone, right?
Yeah.
You have to speak loud.
I'll speak, I can speak loud. There's not a problem with that.
Never have any problem.
No, no. That's right.
I'm hearing most things, but.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, from COVID, I lost hearing.
Oh, well.
The doctor said they know now it goes anywhere near bobby. In my ears.
Wow, better be careful what you say when you're. You better be careful what you say. That was nothing.
If you guys could fight, it's all right. I'm hip and.
My error.
But I'm lucky to miss things.
But the earrings are bad.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I have a thing. The eighties, when my niece was little, she's thirty two now. But when she was little, she used to play all my dates, eighties, early. So I saved them because she played with them.
Did you go away?
And I know it's the bag is still.
Are you going away?
Because I know that's really.
Yeah.
Because we're. We ripped from that.
Yeah.
Alan said they did.
Yeah, these are very lightweight.
A biopsy.
Yeah.
So some kind of strange cancer. I gotta go to the doctor.
Wow.
It's got me a little nervous.
So who will be Moe's?
Huh?
Moe's? M-O-H-S, Moe's?
No.
Okay.
I mean, they're not doing scraping.
They scraped biopsy already, that's what they.
Now it's.
Now they're, I gotta, tomorrow I have to go and take pictures. And they're gonna go over the biopsy results.
So my room had melanoma all in her face. They asked, it would need five inches. Like, I wouldn't even think you could do that, but like, it kinda gone down on its lap. Like, it was huge, because it was melanoma. And so it was huge. Like, you can't even tell that.
Well, the first time, I want to see also plastic surgery, so.
Yeah.
It had to be pulled because of advertisement.
I said, the doctor I called to today.
Aye, aye, aye.
It's been three weeks since I've been here.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of a sudden you tell them to have it. Spread it. I said, what happened with those three weeks?
It was supposed to be second reading, but they needed. Well, no, we needed X amount of D between advertising.
Oh, you know, it takes so much. I said, we need to get this off to that, we should have them back.
Yeah, it will be, it'll be on December, yeah.
It's right away, like, you're sitting with us maybe twenty minutes.
Yeah.
And resolution two forty-three was.
Yes, that was, um, was taken late.
Yeah, I know. I was nervous with this. It looks.
You really did, really well.
It did. I go back on Tuesday. And then I had another biopsy here.
I had one back, back here.
Yeah.
Right there, where I could see that mark there. Like, yeah. That was kind of this.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought that those are.
I hope so, too.
Yeah, and I know, like, it was amazing what they did with her. She said it was five inches. I thought it would be affecting inside her mouth and all.
Harpids.
She was okay, yeah.
Harpids, juniors? I say.
Yeah, so I guess they smited in. And you can't even help.
No.
Yeah.
That's encouraging to hear.
And that was melanoma.
Nobody else knew.
I knew, I've had stitches everywhere. It is nasty. So, Mr. Smith. Over here.
How are you?
I'm okay, but I lost some hearing. You need to speak into the microphone for me.
Don't make the.
You don't change.
Don't make me go over there.
Love the spots. We're trying anything we can to get you to speak into the mic.
We're getting more time here.
What's the official chime time?
They think they did.
Right on time.
People have to fuck. I want to come down.
Microphone.
You know, hook them right up.
Is it this time now we had to pull that? Twenty, twenty-six?
We had to pull that, yeah. It'll be. I'm pretty sure there was an email sent out. I'm sure.
I didn't see that when I saw it.
Oh, my.
So you saw that? They had, we had to pull twenty-six. Got this thing hanging.
If you can't hear, I can't say.
We had to pull. Your vacation. And I'm gonna. Have to do them suffer at times.
You pull everything off tonight for a bunch of transfers and get out of here early.
What's that, where does everybody now?
Oh, I heard that.
Such an hard picture.
I wasn't invited.
There you are.
And I'm sleeping in the morning.
Good for you. Okay.
Wait, I missed that, huh?
Huh?
Okay.
This meeting is called to order, would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bruno?
Here.
Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Douglas?
Here.
Councilmember McCary?
Here.
Councilmember McGuigan?
Here.
Councilmember Dill?
Here.
Council President Johnston?
Here. Also present is Mayor Glasser, Administrator Frost, Confidential Assistant to the City Clerk, Julie Anne Canucio, City Solicitor Smith, and City Engineer Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summerspoint.gov.org. I need a. Motion to pull ordinance number twenty-six and resolution number two forty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Also ask for a motion to pull ordinance number twenty-eight.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Anyone have any communications to offer?
Hearing none?
Hearing none, Mr. Mayor?
Good, Council President. We'll note that Veterans Day will be this Saturday at eleven o'clock a.m. at Patriots Park. I hope everybody is able to get down there and attend it. It's a day that we do recognize those who have served in the military, and I just want to take the time to, first of all, recognize two of the, two veterans of this. Ward, and of course, it's Councilman DePanis and Councilman Dill, who served in the military. And if anybody else out there is a veteran. Steve, you're a veteran, couldn't you hear? I want to recognize anybody else that's here in the audience, if you are, raise your hand, that's a veteran. A veteran, okay, thank you. Thank you for your service, and I appreciate it, but if you get a chance, please come down to Veterans Day Service on Saturday. But again, Memorial Day is the day that we recognize those who have lost their lives in the line of duty for our great country, and Veterans Day is the day that we recognize those who have served. So, thank you all for your service. With that, on Thanksgiving, the American Legion will be hosting the recruits from the USS, US Coast Guard Station, most of the day. They'll be giving them lots of heat, of course, Turkey, and I know the members of the Legion and folks show up and they give them cell phones so they can call home and a lot of that. They've been doing this for a long time, Bobby Frollo, who's our County Veteran Service Officer, so he'll be there doing that. And last but not least is Pro Harbor Day will be Sunday, December third, one o'clock P.M. at the beach. So, with that, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Frost?
Yes. Today we sold four million one hundred and forty thousand dollars in bond application notes. We received a rate of four point two five. This is the capital portion of the budget that we approved this year. We chose to do short-term financing and. Financing theoretically sometime next summer when the market conditions are a little bit better, but according to the Bond Council. Four point two five is a pretty good rate right now. Give everyone update on that.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam President, may I ask?
Yes.
Mr. Frost, you realize today that you are just as close to twenty as you are to sixty. But tomorrow, you will be closer to sixty than you are twenty. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
Birthday. Closer to sixty than you are twenty tomorrow.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith? Did you want to sing happy birthday? Into the microphone?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes, we had a pre-construction meeting with the, for the Ocean Avenue project and the Exton-Cowick-Devon Road project with the contractors and the state of New Jersey. Pluminary work has begun, but most of the heavy work will should start this upcoming weekend. Both contractors have their concrete crew scheduled to start, so we should see a lot of progress soon on those jobs. Additionally, the city received a three hundred sixty-eight thousand one hundred seventy-five dollar grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for New Jersey Avenue. This is for repaving from Bay to Third Street. This is the application we submit annually. Summers Point was the third highest in the county besides the Lang City and Pleasantville, which actually gets additional aid based on, there's a special formula for that, so. Besides Lang City and Pleasantville, Summers Point had the highest grant amount.
Could you repeat that number for New Jersey Avenue?
Three hundred sixty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That's fantastic. So when will that work?
It should be this spring.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great news, thank you. Anyone have any committee reports to offer? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? Any comments?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Ordinance, uh, number twenty-seven?
Ordinance number twenty-seven of twenty twenty-three and ordinance amending sections one fourteen dash one forty-three B and one fourteen dash one forty-four B of Article twenty-two, citing review and adding requirements for bicycle parking provisions.
We have a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any comments?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Both of our ordinance tonight are first readings, so we'll be open for public comment at next month's meeting, at the second reading. Ordinance number twenty-nine, please.
Ordinance number twenty-nine of twenty twenty-three and ordinance repealing and creating a new Article Two of Chapter thirty-four of Code of the City of Summers Point.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our resolutions, could I have a motion to open for public comment on resolutions only, please?
Simuved, second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone and state your name.
Make a motion to close the portion.
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment on resolutions. Resolution number two thirty-nine, please.
Resolution number two thirty-nine of twenty twenty-three, support submission of a grant application SRS dash I dash two zero two four dash Summers Point City dash zero 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 seven five to the, to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Safe Routes to School Program.
May I have a motion, please?
Simuved, second.
Any comments?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two thirty-nine is adopted. Number two forty.
Resolution number two forty of twenty twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three best practices inventory.
May I have a motion, please?
Simuved, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty is adopted. Number two forty-one.
Resolution number two forty-one of twenty twenty-three, acknowledging terms and conditions of participation in the South Jersey Power Cooperative Natural Gas Purchase.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-one is adopted. Number two forty-two.
Resolution number two forty-two of twenty twenty-three, authorizing the chief financial officer to cancel grant balance.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-two is adopted. Number two forty-four.
Resolution number two forty-four of two thousand twenty-three, amended financial depositories.
May I have a motion, please?
Simuved, second.
Any comments?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-four is adopted. Number two forty-five.
Resolution number two forty-five of twenty twenty-three, adoption of amended cash management plan.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-five is adopted. Number two forty-six.
Resolution number two forty-six of twenty twenty-three, authorizing advertising bids for stormwater, pipe cleaning, and video inspection along Bay Avenue.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-six is adopted. Uh, number two forty-seven.
Resolution number two forty-seven of twenty twenty-three, resolution amending the content of resolution number two twenty-six of twenty twenty-three.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-seven is adopted. Thank you. Under old business. Further discussion for proposed ordinance amending code section one fourteen dash five zero A. This is in reference to the tree ordinance.
Thank you, Madam President, yes. Obviously, we've had a substantial discussion at the last meeting, and I know a couple of those items were with regards to where the stuff would be planted, where the trees would be planted and who would control that. So what I did is modified this ordinance and to address those concerns, reminding you that the planning board did acknowledge that this was within our master plan, within conformance with our master plan. So I thought I would bring it back here, I know that Mr. McCary had some concerns that Mrs. Bruno wasn't here and that we could, I felt like perhaps we could address it, and that's when I asked to put it back on the, on the. On the agenda, but Madam President asked that it be, you know, put it in under old business here. So at this point, I'm hoping that, you know, based on what Mr. Helbig, unfortunately, he's not here tonight, he has another commitment, had articulated after our discussion to you, I'm hoping that we can consider putting it on the, excuse me, on the agenda tonight. And so at that point, I'm gonna ask for a forty-eight hour waiver and that we move this on to the, on to the agenda. So I would like to make that motion and hope that somebody would give me a second.
Can we discuss this before? The idea was to have further discussion?
Well, sure, we have, now, we have a motion in a second, then we can have discussion, certainly.
Okay, could I have a roll call, please?
What I'm saying is, you can have this, and I'm not the lawyer here, but you can have discussion before you call for a vote, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay, so we can have the discussion now?
I, I'm the assistant.
Okay, I'm gonna comment on this, I just. My only issue with this ordinance, the way it's written now, is, to me, when I read the paragraph about reviewing boards and. I just think that this is a little bit of an administrative nightmare, because to me, and the way this reads is that if I'm a business owner and I want to redevelop or develop a property and I have to do twenty trees and I can only do ten. Those other ten trees, I have to plant somewhere else on city property, and then I have to pay to maintain it for two years. And I guess, my question is, how, who's gonna watch after that particular tree? Who's gonna take, who's gonna keep a record of which tree was planted for which business? And I just feel like it's a lot of administrative work there that we could avoid if we just did the second paragraph, which is, in lieu of completing the required tree plantings on city-owned property, the applicant can provide a lump sum payment to the city's tree preservation fund. And then we could use those funds to plant new trees where we want them, of the trees that we already have, and that's, and I just think that, and I think it should be decided by the Environmental Commission and all of the people that are listed on the paragraph before, but also maybe get some advice from a professional landscaper that could recommend, and we could have it in here, what type of trees specifically can be planted on public property in Summers Point. I'd like to just have some research done so they know exactly what it is they're buying, maybe even figure out a sum, so it's in here that this is what you would pay for each tree, and, I mean, the city is gonna have to take care of it regardless of, so let's put the money into a fund, use that money to take care of the new trees as well as some of the other trees in our town that need some work or need to be replaced. I just think administratively, it would make it much cleaner, and I think the business owner. Has a lot more, other things to do for two years, first, opening up a new business or maintaining one, then wonder where his money's going for a tree that he doesn't have any control taking care of. That's, that's the only issue that I have with this, I just think it should, that it should be made a little simpler and keeps the money in a fund and let the Environmental Commission or make the recommendation of where they think we need trees and we could have a plan and, and get them planted, and get them planted properly and get them taken care of properly and in the place where we want them, so.
If I may. I'm not sure what it says here in this ordinance that the business owner is gonna be responsible for. that the business owner is going to be responsible for. It, the business owner has to provide a performance and maintenance guarantee. That's not, that's not the, that's not the maintenance of it.
No, right, they're not the ones taking care of it.
Right, any tree on city property is maintained, currently maintained, and will be maintained in the future by the Department of Public Works. So if we want more trees, and this is an excellent avenue to get those trees, and alleviates the burden of the current code on larger developments, and it benefits the city, I see it's a win-win situation.
Now, you actually made my point that a business owner doesn't have control over taking care of this tree, that he has to put up an escrow to take care of for two years. But he doesn't have control over that. We're still taking care of it. I just think it would be easier and less paperwork and less administrative responsibility to just take the money and put it into a fund, and let's come up with a plan of where we want trees, and exactly where they should be planted, worry about site triangles and all that stuff. Let's come up with a plan for the whole town of where you, where we need more trees. And that's just, you have, somebody puts in, to the fund, and you apply that money to so many trees when you can. That just seems a lot simpler than tying all this up and having escrows and...
So we're considering this, but we don't have a copy of it.
We don't have a, I don't have a copy of the amendment, the amendments.
This was emailed today. I printed mine out, but...
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to print it out. I didn't get a chance to read it. I had other things that were far more important. And I'm not, I'm not going to make a decision on something that I... I'm not going, I'm going to abstain. I'm not going to make, I'm not going to vote on something I haven't had an opportunity to read.
I don't understand what the rush is here. I don't think we'd be planting trees in December or January. Let's, let everybody read this. Let's let everybody do their own research, get their own, you know, information, and bring it back.
And I don't understand what the delay is here, why we keep delaying it.
I just told you why. I just told you why.
And I don't understand, I know, but you constantly want to bend over backwards for businesses. And I think we need to consider the community more. I mean, we ended up, we cleared all the...
Helping a business.
But anything you're saying is, you know, for the benefit of the businesses.
No, it's for the benefit of our staff in City Hall. Administratively, take, I'm not, this is fine. I'm not saying, don't charge them and don't make them do, pay for the trees. I'm not saying that, that doesn't matter. What I'm saying is administratively, who's going to track who owns, who paid for what tree, and who's going to, what escrow fund that money's going to come out of if that tree isn't healthy or isn't doing well.
Can our engineer shed some light on it? Because I know we had a situation out at the tennis court where there was issues with trees. How does that, in the current ordinance, how does that process work?
So typically, they would put up a bond for any off-site improvements or landscaping that's for two years. So they would either put up a letter of credit or get a bonding company to post the bond. So if the city had to go back and replace them, and that they weren't willing to, the city could call the bond and actually replace them.
Because I know we had some issues out at the tennis court area with several of the trees.
Yeah, that was from the contract.
At some point in time, it was resolved, and the trees and the shrubbery out there are doing fine now. But in the very beginning, there were issues. It was drainage and things of that nature. And, you know, I just, I think council should have some kind of idea of what the process is under the old ordinance. And I guess my other question is, under the ordinance that Mr. McGuigan's requesting tonight, does that change at all?
It doesn't really change the process for the bonding. Usually, the maintenance bonds will just expire after two years if the city doesn't take any action. So it's no longer valid unless there was, if a tree died and the developer refused to replace it, that's when the city would call the bond to actually make the improvements. But that rarely happens unless they go bankrupt or something like that.
Okay. So the process in place that worked at the tennis courts, we got new trees?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, it did work.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is there a, something that says you can plant these kinds of trees, but you can't have these kinds? Because I know that there are some that, when they start to spread their roots through the systems, they can go into the sewer area, you know, depending on whether, and they can create havoc. So is this ordinance specifically calling out the types of trees we can plant and the ones that cannot be planted?
I don't believe, it doesn't call out specific trees because the location is unknown, because certain trees would do better in certain locations, depending if they like sun.
Right. So this is a little bit more involved than just plant a tree?
Yeah, it probably, it would go, when they, applicant or developer submitted a planning board application, if they couldn't have all the trees on their site, they'd, you know, have a plan of where they would put them in the city.
Right. And this, this does not, this makes it, this ordinance that is proposed makes it easier on the builder because they're reducing, on the larger properties, they're reducing the amount, the requirement than what's in our ordinance already. So that already is in here, but that helps the developer more than anything. So I didn't propose that, I questioned that in the beginning. But if the ultimate goal is to build more trees, why would you reduce the requirement?
Well, I think that Mr. Dill brought up a good point. We don't have that documentation in front of us.
Right, we don't have.
Understand it. And I think at that point, we can make a decision on the trees. But right now, we're kind of just sitting here guessing that this is a good thing to do, although I think Mr. McGuigan did a great job of laying this out. And it probably will go down a route where it will get proved in some fashion. But at this point, I think I agree with Mr. Dill that we should, you know, wait.
I want to clarify something. I'm not saying that we should, this council should necessarily wait. I'm just saying that I didn't get a copy of the amendments to the original ordinance. And I didn't get a chance to read it. I don't want to read it haphazardly tonight, sitting in front of me. So I'm going to abstain. Whatever the vote turns out to be, I guess my only other question is, if it does pass tonight, that I get an opportunity to take a look at it and have my questions answered? Can I vote on the second one if I abstain on this one?
Well, what I am asking for is, A, it'll be put on the agenda, and B, to be, it's then introduced. So then there will be a final reading at the next meeting. So finally, like any ordinance, the first vote is to introduce it. And really, and I've had this discussions with various people, that you should always vote to introduce something because it gives the opportunity for it to be publicized, for the public to, I'm sorry.
Please let him talk, I can't hear when you talk over him.
I apologize.
Okay, back to me?
Yeah.
Okay, so when we introduce something, it's to publicize it. It gives an opportunity, A, for anybody to do more research if they want, and for B, that the, for the public to know that we're considering it. So that we come back and have that public hearing. So, you know, if you haven't seen it or have questions about it, I would suggest vote to have it introduced. And then if you don't like it, or you do more research and you don't think it's a good thing, you can vote it down in December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, well.
Right, that's what's on the table now.
Sure.
All right, any further comments?
And the first one is to put it on the agenda. Wait the 48-hour rule and put it on the agenda.
Right.
Second.
Second.
Any further comments? Any further comments? Could I have a roll call vote? And this is, you're voting as to whether or not you want to waive the 48-hour rule to put this on the agenda now.
Councilmember Bruno?
Yes, for now, put it on now.
Councilmember Owen?
I'm really in favor of going green with trees, and have faith that this will all work out, so, yes, moving forward.
Councilmember DePampelis?
I have my doubts, but I'll say yes, move it forward.
Councilmember McCary?
I'll go with a yes. I think that it's worthwhile to review. I just think we need to take a lot of time, look at it, and make sure that it's really crystal clear to everyone how we're going to proceed.
Councilmember McGuigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dill?
Yes.
Council President Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number, we don't have an ordinance number.
I'd like to refer to it as number 30. Madam...
The next ordinance would be 30.
Okay. I would make a motion to introduce what is number 30. So we need somebody to second now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was the first reading, so it will be open for public comment on the second reading. Okay, we're moving on to, anybody else have any Old Business to discuss? We'll move on to New Business, approval to waive raffle fees for the American Legion pull tab license. Anybody have any? Does everyone approve of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Reconstruction of, we already talked about the grant. Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder.
Mm-hmm, great job. Big number.
We have a very exciting 2023 storm weather report, please, Mr. Frost.
As a result of rules published by the U.S. ETA, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection developed a municipal stormwater regulation program beginning in 2004. There are four different types of permits. And because of Summers Point's proximity to the coast, we are considered a tier A community. The permits address stormwater quality issues as it relates to new development and existing development by implementing statewide basic requirements that include, among other items, that municipalities adopt and enforce stormwater management plan. In April of 2004, Summers Point implemented a stormwater pollution prevention plan and adopted a stormwater management plan. In March of 2006, we adopted a stormwater control ordinance. The city also has a stormwater pollution prevention plan that has been periodically updated since 2004, the last time being December 2018. In conjunction with stormwater pollution management, we have also adopted ordinances that regulate pet waste disposal, improper waste disposal, wildlife feeding, yard waste, illicit connections to the stormwater systems, and dumpsters. New ordinances were passed in 2018 concerning wildlife feeding and improper waste disposal to further bolster the city's effort to manage stormwater pollution prevention. In 2018, the city also reached out by letter to all private operators of stormwater facilities to ensure that they're acquainted with the regulations and their continuing maintenance obligations. Also, beginning in 2018, online training for stormwater management was made available for members of the governing body, planning board, and zoning board. The city has 43 outflow pipes in total. Each year, they are inspected for evidence of illicit connections. In 2020, all 43 were inspected with no evidence of scouring or illicit connections. In 2022, the city swept 58 miles of streets and collected about 19 tons of debris during our street sweeping. It's a total of about 655 pounds per mile of city streets. These are materials that could have washed into storm drains. The city operates 649 cache basins. In 2022, we removed 24 tons to clean 45 of those basins. As part of our roadwork performed, we replaced eight storm drain grates with grates that are now better designed to prevent pollutants from entering the storm drains. A total of 227, or roughly 35% of the city's storm drain grates have been converted since 2004. The city has adopted standard operating procedures that deal with fueling operations, vehicle maintenance and cleaning, road and salt storage, and annual employee training. Since approximately 60% of our water pollution problems are attributed to stormwater pollution, and stormwater pollution can often be linked to our daily activities and lifestyles, many people who allow motor oil, trash, and pet waste to enter the system, the store, excuse me, storm system in the street don't realize that they'll probably end up in the bay just a few blocks away. It is important that we all make an effort to keep pollutants out of our stormwater system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's fantastic, Jason.
Very good.
I'm just going to go with it. Could you read that one more time? I didn't hear it.
Encore, encore.
How many miles?
Cass woman didn't hear it. You need to be...
Okay. Wellness information? Is that you as well?
That was for Jiff? Yeah, she didn't provide me.
Okay, we'll put that, we'll put that on next month, okay.
I can do it. Get more exercise and drink more water.
We need a, Department of Transportation Marina update for our municipal marina. Mr. Frost?
Yeah, so we ran into some challenges with the DOT or Marina this past summer. However, it does seem that those are processes being mitigated between the NJDOT and Fish and Wildlife, who funded that project down there. So the update as of right now is, I think we're in fair standing with them, and we're working through the items between DOT and Fish and Wildlife, Councilman Dill, Council President Johnson, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Snyder. We're all on a call last Friday, where we discussed these items with one contact at DOT. And I am confident we're going through the issues.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions on that? Thank you for addressing that so quickly. I'm fast, so. Discussion of the bills.
Sure. This evening, we have a bill list in the amount of $346,022.26.
May I have a motion to open for public comment?
Always have a motion. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We're now open for public comment. If you wish to speak, please step up to the mic and state your name. This is an unusual night. Patricia Pearson, 587 Marks Road. I'm going to keep it brief. I'm going to tell you about trees in Summers Point. Some of you are going to remember, and some of you aren't. Okay, we'll start with the point down there at the waterfront. Danny Marley's mayor, they put, that thing was called sales. They put a big, big white plastic fence, okay? Me and other people, they wanted to make parking lots separate from the, not the junkyard, the tow truck yard, or whatever you call it down there.
Cito.
Okay. So put a big white plastic fence. But on your bayfront, you have a big white plastic fence. So we were all crazy. It was big. So anyhow, the end of the story is Danny, to appease everybody, says, "We're going to have them put up trees." So, yeah, right. Anyhow, he did, they did, they paid for it. They put up these green evergreens, they grew tall. You go down and look at the Point parking lot, and you'll see all green there by the tow truck place, and it actually looks good. So that's a good one. All right, here's one. 25 years ago, my daughter Patty put a little bakery supply store at Annie and Shaw. And she had the money to do it, but she was down to probably her last $1,000, I'll say. I think Tony Martin was mayor. He sends somebody from the city over and tells her to go to Cherry Hill and get a planner, a landscape planner. This is what I think you're trying to keep happening from businesses, you know, be overwhelmed. And pay $4,000 so they could tell you azaleas, whatever you put out there, so it wouldn't look much. So you have to pay for somebody to come and do that. So you have to pay for somebody to come and do that. Well, that was drama and trauma, and that went out the window. It didn't happen, okay? But that will happen here. You'll all have to deal with this stuff. The next one, the biggest one was, you know where Ace Hardware is on Route 9, right there?
Yeah.
True Value Hardware.
You remember it used to be a fruit market years ago where they sold fruit there and everything? And then there was a landscaper there for about five or 10 years. You remember that? So anyhow, the landscaper, happened to be, this doesn't involve me, but I happened to be at the planning board and heard all the promises of how this was going to be such a beautiful landscape area and this and that, and trees and everything. I heard it all. It turns out that I think the landscaper ran out of money, didn't have the time, or whatever. But on 7th Street now, this is in the back of Ace Plumbing, 7th Street, some of those houses sit up a little bit, and they look down into the yard of Ace Plumbing, if you can follow what I'm saying. So anyhow, there's a man that lived there, and he was in here every meeting, every meeting, hollering, where's the trees? He wanted all trees on 7th Street at the landscaping yard, okay? The bottom line is, after many, many episodes in here, many, he did plant trees, and they were like those evergreens out at the point, but these trees, for some reason, all died. And the bottom line is landscaper went to jail, I think. The homeowner moved out of town, and they were stuck with all the dead trees on 7th Street. So I'm just telling you, it sounds nice, oh, plant a tree, do this, do that. Let me tell you, that's all true stories. And I think you probably, most of you remember them. So there you go. That's the stories of the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, everybody liked this, had a feel-good physically. So you do what I did today in Ocean City on the beach, you get this Rite Aid Hawaiian Tropic Brown coconut suntan oil. We're trying to help Rite Aid get out of bankruptcy here. And put that on your face 40 minutes, cold ocean like I did today. Pool, hot whirlpool, sauna bath, steam bath, shower shampoo, massage. Good diet, vegetables, fruit, whole grain cereals, and sleep. Coglin, the New York Giants football coach, he didn't like facial hair, so he made all the players shave all the time. It does make you feel better. You sleep better, work better. Haircuts. I help a guy in Philly who gives haircuts to the homeless. And then after Colgate, I won a Rockefeller Fellowship to Harvard Divinity School and taught a seminar at Harvard Kennedy School of Government. So we had Harvard Club of Delaware, we had Harvard professor speak. I never forgot this. Talked about the biological time clock. When you get up in the morning, if you don't tamper with the body, you'll get increased strength and you'll feel better. But if you tamper with it, through coffee, tea, caffeinated soda, chocolate, which has caffeine in it, alcohol, whatever, it, you know, gets in the way of a biological time clock. So anyway, and then one more, impromptu naps. Now, I had a good sleep last night, but I wasn't too energetic this morning, so around... 7:30. 7:30. I just lay down, took a nap for 10 minutes, and then I got strength. So anyway, probably the best article ever written about somebody running for president, Aaron Noble, Connecticut Valley Spectator, a New Hampshire newspaper, wrote an article about me, and he said, Ed O'Donnell has a fanatical commitment to physical fitness. So we need to work on this. And I want to thank the mayor for treating everybody with respect, for helping people. He's helped a lot of people. And I want to thank public citizens. Pearson, we need more activists. And for Sean, 126 days till St. Patrick's Day. And tell Russ Swain to go to the Penn Princeton game, November 18th, Philadelphia. And, oh, yeah, one more thing. This is good. Free Thanksgiving dinner, the Methodist Church in Marmora, Ocean City Rotary Club. Thanksgiving Day, 1 o'clock to 3:00. Delicious, free Thanksgiving dinner. Anyone can come, but if you know anybody who's homeless, lonely, sick, whatever. Spread the word. Spread the word. And one more quick thing, I did not pay the $1,000 filing fee to get on the ballot. New Hampshire run for president this year. I decided to save the money and work on write-in votes. So next spring in the New Jersey primary, and next November 5th, you can write in Ed O'Donnell for president. But since I'm the real President of the United States, I have to deal with important issues. Now, I love Rob Thompson. He did a great job, great charity work, but some of you will remember Gene Mauch, Phillies' manager. So the last Houston game last year, these last two games this year, Philly should have bunted, bunted for base hits, squeezed bunts, waited out for walks, stolen bases, stealing home, stuff like that.
It's all about the long ball.
Short ball, no, small ball.
Thank you.
Motion to close public portion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. How could I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Frost can pay the bills. Any further comments from the governing body?
Madam President, if I may?
Yes, please.
I would like to acknowledge and congratulate both Mayor-elect Dennis Taft and Councilman-elect Charles Havaporn in the back at Old Mayor. And I look forward to having him on this side of the, thanks. And number two, I'd like to remind you that tomorrow, Jason Falls will be closer to 60 than he used to.
That's what I missed.
That's it. Happy birthday, Jason.
He still has hair.
Could I have a motion to close, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.